Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Without objection, I would ask that we suspend the rules to provide this council meeting be held via video and teleconference in accordance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended on October 16th, 2020. And that participation of no less than four council members on this video and teleconference constitutes a quorum for the purposes of conducting this meeting. Procedure we are using is a result of the current and ongoing pandemic for which a local state of emergency has been declared. It is intended to promote the health and safety of the members of the public, city staff, city council, which is the goal expressed in the order issued by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services on December 7th, 2020. Additionally, public comment on any agenda item and participation during communications from citizens will be provided via Zoom teleconference at the following telephone number. When prompted, residents should enter the following meeting number. And press pound. You do not need to enter a passcode. Additionally, members of the public may join the meeting via video conferencing by following the Zoom link listed on the agenda. All members of the public will be muted during the business portion of the meeting. Those wishing to speak on any agenda item or during communications from citizens will be asked to press star nine if you're participating by phone or to click the raise hand option if you're participating via video conference. Do that at the appropriate time when prompted by the chair. Phone participants may also need to press star six in order to unmute themselves when prompted. Video participants may need to both unmute and start their video when prompted. So please be advised there could be delays based on the number of participants. Procedurally, in order to facilitate an orderly meeting by video and teleconference, I ask that if any of my colleagues on the city council want the floor to make or second a motion, please unmute yourself and ask for the floor, and this will allow me to identify you. Council members are also reminded to please have your devices on mute when not talking to limit interference and refrain from watching the meeting online due to the slight broadcast delay. All votes of the city council tonight will be by roll call vote conducted by our city clerk. Is there any objection, council, to proceeding in the manner that I've outlined? If not, hearing no objection, I will recite the Pledge of Allegiance on behalf of the city council so it can be heard clearly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Ryska, will you please proceed by reading the invocation?
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Ryska, may we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saraski?
Here.
Mrs. Kasky?
Participating.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Participating.
Mr. Yanis?
Participating.
And Mrs. Yarco?
Participating.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Council, we need approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kasky?
Move to approve the agenda.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Taylor?
Support.
Motion to approve the agenda has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Ryska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Saraski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kasky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by reminding everyone of the holiday schedule coming up in observance of the Christmas holiday. And to help curb the spread of COVID-19, city offices will be closed for business on Thursday, December 24th through Christmas and the New Year's holiday. The city will reopen for business on Monday, January 4th. The city's refuse collection will be delayed one day both holiday weeks. There'll be no refuse collection on Friday, December 25th or Friday, January 1st. The city is recycling Christmas trees left at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on residents' normal trash day as we customarily have done over the years. This program will run through January 31st and allows the trees to be turned into woodchips and returned to the earth in an environmentally friendly manner, thus allowing the city to save valuable landfill space. And I'm always pleased to report on the next topics every year because I'm very proud of our team effort and their spirit of giving during the holiday season. First, with respect to our holiday assistance program. This year, close to 100 families in Sterling Heights and surrounding communities received assistance through the city's Holiday Assistance Program. 14 local organizations as well as individuals participated through the sponsorship of local families. The city is still receiving calls from local businesses asking how they can help. So we're still connecting with individuals in need throughout the next couple of weeks. And also, the police department has been very active due to COVID and safety precautions to stop the spread. A decision was made to cancel the annual cops and kids this year. However, our officers, of course, love doing this. And in lieu of cops and kids, the Sterling Heights Police Department and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 118, the Sterling Heights Command Officers and Police Officers Association will be sponsoring multiple families this holiday season to make sure they experience some joy and happiness during the difficult period. And I'm going to show you some of their efforts shortly. The Department of Public Works held their annual Ken Stempowski Memorial Food Drive. This year donations included non-perishable food items, $1,000 in monetary donations, 19 frozen turkeys from Threadcraft. And the food will be delivered to the Macomb Food Pantry where it's then distributed to 52 pantries across the county and feeding 500 people a day. And the mayor and city council and I, along with businesses and employees, donated thousands of dollars to a young family's three children who lost both parents due to COVID. And if you'll allow me to share my screen, I wanted to take just a minute to share some of these pictures. These individuals, of course, reside in Sterling Heights. Their ages are 14, 19, and 21. And unfortunately, they lost both their mother and father due to COVID earlier this year. So the Sterling Heights Police Department has been hard at work connecting them with as many resources as possible. And I'm super proud to report on the amazing effort that ensued because of the police department's involvement. Today, the three children, along with representatives from the police department, were presented thousands of dollars in gift cards and gifts. And although Ices is closed for business other than carryout, they were able to pick up the gifts at Ices in a very secure way honoring social distancing. And you can see the kids going into Ices here. Of course, no one else could go in. And these are the gifts that they were able to pick up. These were from businesses all across the city, individuals all across the city, from the mayor and from the city council and from employees. And this is continuing to go on. There's a GoFundMe effort underway as well. So we're really proud of this effort. But I want to say I'm proud of the entire organization's effort to help individuals in need this time of year, especially this year. So a shout out to all of our great team members. And if I can continue to draw your attention to the screen on another topic. Some of you may be seeing DTE out in your neighborhood marking trees for their upcoming 2021 tree trimming program. And if you look on the screen before you, you can see the green areas where they're going to be doing some of this trimming. So I just wanted everyone to be aware, number one, this is not part of the city tree trimming program. This is specifically coordinated by DT. They do provide notice to individuals that are affected. So you'll either receive a letter, a door hanger, or possibly a phone call if they simply can't connect with residents. But I wanted you to be aware of this. It is posted on our website. Of course, you can contact DT for more information. Let me move on to the next topic. And I wanted to report on, we have many businesses that continue to operate and are doing well in notwithstanding the COVID conditions. And one of them is AGS, and they have been awarded a new contract from their largest customer, which will serve as a platform for the company's entry into the high-tech segment of the bumper assembly business. AGS plans to add stamping capacity, plating capacity, and assembly operations within the existing footprint of their campus in Sterling Heights, while also incorporating more autonomous technology. The project is expected to generate a total private investment of $5 million and best of all, create 500 new jobs, resulting in an $850,000 Michigan Business Program Performance Base Grant. And Michigan was chosen for this investment over competing sites in Canada. The positions being created will include engineers, craftsmen, operators, and all with pay that is above average and also allow for promotion within the company. The project is the company's first autonomous vehicle program in the United States and aligns with several of MEDC's focus areas, including supporting a business in the target industry of mobility and fostering high-wage job growth. It builds on the state's work to position itself as a global leader in the future of mobility and vehicle electrification and offers potential and significant follow-up, follow-on projects in the long run. I wanted to highlight this project especially because the city of Sterling Heights has been involved in it and working hand-in-hand with the company. And we're supporting the project with marketing and recruitment assistance. And I wanted everyone to know, or those interested in looking for a job, that individuals can contact or go to the AGS website. That's agsautomotive.com/career-opportunities. And you can learn more about this significant investment that's occurring in Sterling Heights. And on another topic, I reported a few meetings ago that our city building official, Mike Viasenko, was recognized by the State Building Association for his distinguished service across the state, working with developers and property and apartment condo managers and the like. And it's quite a distinction. And he's highlighted this month, I know you can't see this magazine, but it's a statewide magazine distributed to thousands of individuals across the state. And Mike is featured in here, and I'm very proud of his good work. It's well-deserved, and he certainly is worthy of the recognition. So once again, congratulations to Mike Viasenko, the city's building official. And lastly, on my report this evening, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act for council to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with McComb County Circuit Court case number 19-001606-NI. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda is a presentation, and this is to receive the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. We have a presentation from our city controller, Nick Mackey, and from representatives from Plant and Moran. So I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I'm very happy to be here this evening to present the results of our 2020 financial audit. Each year, our independent auditors review our financial statements and our accounting procedures. This audit is a very time-consuming and detailed process and involves the cooperation of many employees throughout the organization. And I'd like to thank everyone that was involved, especially the entire finance team who have once again done an excellent job. We prepared a short presentation to go over the audit results. The full 147-page audit report is available on the city's website, and hard copies are available at the library. So let me share my screen. So, to summarize, the audited financial statements. The net position of the city, which represents total assets minus total liabilities, has increased by $7.5 million from the prior year. Most of this increase is in governmental activities and is due to the large investments the city has been making into infrastructure, including roads and facilities. General fund revenues totaled $109.7 million. Expenditures totaled $106.7 million, which means we added $3 million to general fund reserves this year, which was greater than projected. This brings our total general fund balance to $29.9 million or 28.04% of general fund expenditures. In 2021, we're projected to use $750,000 of reserves, bringing our total reserves to $29.2 million or 26% of expenditures. In total, general fund revenues were within 3.3% of budgeted targets. They decreased $1.9 million or 1.7% over last year. This decrease was due primarily to the rollback of the one-time one-mil increase in the prior year and was partially offset by increased tax revenue growth, $1.3 million in additional federal and state-sourced revenue, $500,000 less in interest income, mostly due to fewer bond proceeds on hand, and decreases in fines and charges for services of about $1.4 million, which were primarily due to decreases in court fines related to the operational shutdowns related to COVID. General fund expenditures were 1.3% lower than budgeted, and every city department came in under budget. Expenditures decreased by $2.8 million from the previous year. And this decrease included an $8 million decrease in road construction funding. Again, this was related to the prior year one-time one-mil increase in taxes. This decrease was offset by $1.9 million in increased pension and OPEB contributions, $1.3 million of increased debt service related to the new DPW bonds, and $1.9 million in increased personnel costs, mostly due to contractual wage adjustments and step increases. Now, let's look at some of the other activity in our other major funds. First, major and local roads. As you can see from this chart, revenue for major and local roads totaled over $18 million in 2020. Revenue from the state of Michigan, known as Act 51, revenue totaled $12.4 million and was an increase year-over-year about $600,000. The Safe Streets Village provided $3.5 million for neighborhood road improvements. This is up about $200,000 from the prior year. And the general fund provided an additional $1 million for the major road fund this year. Investment in major roads decreased by $2.3 million year-over-year with actual expenditures, including bonded funds totaling $14.9 million in 2020. In 2021, budgeted expenditures are $15.5 million. This year's neighborhood road projects totaled $6.3 million. And in 2021, we'll see another $7.7 million of investment. Thanks to the renewal of Safe Streets, over 250 additional neighborhood streets will see improvement over the next 10 years. Investments in parks and recreation funded through proceeds from the Recreating Recreation Village continued with over $16 million invested in 2020, which includes $11.7 million related to the completion of the new community center and $2.6 million in parks improvements. In the Capital Projects Fund, capital expenditures totaled $20.6 million in 2020. And some of the items included in that amount are $12.5 million for the start of construction for the new DPW facility, $519,000 in IT upgrades and improvements, $415,000 to complete grant-funded video conferencing systems for the fire department, and $1.6 million in vehicles. The 2021 budget will see continued investments in capital and facilities, including exciting renovations that are currently happening at City Hall, the police department, the library, and the completion of the new DPW building. And finally, Water and Sewer Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund experienced a small operational loss in the current fiscal year, primarily due to lower usage. Usage was 9% lower than estimated for the budget and nearly 8.5% lower than the 10-year average. As you can see from the chart, we've worked to minimize losses in the water and sewer system for the past four years after experiencing significant losses during the downturn. In the current budget, the current budget is projected to include an increase in reserves, which is important for future infrastructure improvements. Now, an update on our city's retirement funds. The city has continued to prioritize funding of its three retirement plans. While the city has made significant commitments to funding these plans, due to market timing as of 6:30, all plans experienced a decrease in funding percentage compared to the prior year. As you may remember, the equities market was still in a downturn as of our measurement date, June 30th, and the asset values reflect this market difference. The retiree medical plan decreased to 55.9% funded, and the funding level for the general employee pension system decreased to 71.6% funded. Both of these plans are closed to new hires. The funding level of the police and fire pension plan decreased to 57.3%, and this is the only plan open to new hires. While the decreases may look concerning, they are again primarily due to the temporary market decline related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And planned assets have since recovered a significant amount of the previous losses. To that end, if you take our investment balances as of November 30th compared to the liability at year-end, you'll see that we are actually 8% to 9% better funded than our report shows as of 6:30, 20. This approximation shows how volatile the market valuation method can be at any given point in time. Another point of good news is that the city has once again been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, as well as the Distinguished Budget Award. These awards have now been awarded to the city for 31 and 32 years respectively, and again show the city's dedication to excellence in financial reporting. The bottom line is the audits show that the city's budgeting and long-term financial planning is on target. We're continuing to add to general fund reserves, ensuring adequate resources will be available to weather any current and future economic uncertainty. We are continuing to invest in roads and community infrastructure, and all of this is accomplished while maintaining the lowest taxes paid per resident when compared to the 10 largest Michigan cities by population. And we continue to have one of the lowest millage rates in McComb County. That concludes my overview, and I'd like to now introduce Joe Kowalski, partner from Plant Moran, our independent auditors. They have spent the past several months reviewing our financial records and operations and have issued an unmodified opinion on the audited financial report, which is the highest rating possible.
Thank you very much, Nick. That's a very comprehensive presentation. And thank you to the mayor and the council for the opportunity to appear today at this meeting to present the results of our audit. We're very pleased to be here and very pleased to report the results of another successful audit with a clean opinion. And let me echo Nick's comments about the GFOA award and say congratulations to the city. That is a great accomplishment. It is an incredibly long streak, and it is not that common to have a streak that long. So congratulations for that. And with me today is Dave Halasek, another partner with Plant Moran. And he's going to talk a little bit more about the results of the audit. But before he does that, I'd just like to quickly say a big thank you to Mr. Vanderpool and Ms. Varney and their team, with an especially big thank you to Nick Mackey. And for the cooperation throughout the audit, the audit is a big lift. And everyone still has their normal collection of people that report to them and their responsibilities for the city day-to-day. And in the meantime, while the audit's going on, there's another half dozen people that are contacting them throughout the day to ask questions about audit evidence. And so the city's books and records were in very good condition, and Nick was very well-prepared for the audit. So a great big thank you. We really do appreciate that. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dave Halasek, and he will talk to you a little bit about the results of the audit and the conduct of the audit.
Thanks, Joe. My name's Dave Halasek, and we're pleased to be before the city council this evening to discuss the results of the annual financial statement audit the city of Sterling Heights for the year ended June 30 of 2020. We really had three deliverables as a result of our audit procedures from the current year, which I think Joe laid out nicely, and Nick did a nice job. Mr. Mackey did a nice job of laying out the results of that audit. As far as the CAFRA itself, again, congratulations on the 32nd, I believe, consecutive year of receiving the CAFRA award for financial reporting. It isn't, it's not easy, one, to have a streak that long, two, but number two, the effort that's needed to put together that document is a pretty big deal. Within the CAFRA itself, though, the financial Within the, within the CAFRA itself, the financial statement, truly the only part of the financial statements to Plant Moran's is the opinion and we were able to give an unmodified opinion as a result of our audit. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is the statements as presented fairly reflect the financial position of the city as of June 30th, 2020 and the change in that financial position or the revenues, the expenditures, the statements of cash flows and the notes within the document. Again, it's the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements and one that we were pleased to give as a result of, I'll call her, extensive financial statement audit. We would have had two written deliverables that I'm going to cover, cover now, one at a time. The first is our report on internal controls. So as mentioned, we do a financial statement audit and we don't opine on the internal control system. The auditing standards do require us, however, to understand and document that system, test the system and tailor our audit approach based on the controls within the system. It also requires us as a result of our testing, if we identify a weakness or deficiency that we document that in writing and report it to this body at this time at the completion of the audit. I can communicate that as a result of our audit procedures, nothing came to our attention that would have resulted in a deficiency or weakness in the internal control system that would have, that would need to be reported at that time, at this time. So the internal control systems, as Joe had mentioned earlier, allowed the city to put its financial, financial information together in a very timely manner. So we were able to complete our audit and meet with council at this time. And then finally, the, the last deliverable is our required communication to those charged with governance as well as a legislative update. So you may recall prior to the start of the audit, we would have sent a communication to this body that would have talked about the upcoming audit. We would have talked about the risks involved in the audit. Every audit has risks. It's relative to what it is we're auditing. We would have identified those risks and would have disclosed our approach to address those items. We also would have given you the opportunity to contact you, the Joe or myself, if there is any concerns and we would, on any specific items and we would have addressed that as part, part of our audit. Come first, come full circle, we have another communication now that would indicate the results of our findings and it's about a two or three-page document and as you, you look through it, the, the good thing to note out of it is there's, there's no exceptions. So, and that, and that's the type of report, report you want. So we discuss in the report what estimates are needed and recorded by the city as part of the process. For instance, Nick had mentioned earlier, some of the liabilities related to legacy costs, that's an estimate based on actuarial assumptions. So that's disclosed in the letter. We indicated as well, we had no difficulties in performing the audit. Joe, Joe alluded that to that earlier. We had no significant corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of our audit. We had no disagreements with management as far as your, your approach, not at, not only to reporting, recording the information, but as far as disclosing that in the financial statement itself. So, so again, that, that was, that was a report without exception. It's one that the city would, would strive to receive on an annual basis. And then finally, the second part of that lot, that communications are legislative and informational type items. So we like to include in here what's going on legislatively. It's probably a couple of weeks behind due to print and we know there's a lot going on in Lansing right now that may affect local units of government. But what we try to do is include here kind of a one-stop shop where, where you can get a handle on what's going on at a, at a state level, how it's going to impact your community from a financial reporting side and maybe even from a funding side locally. And then also we discuss some of the upcoming accounting pronouncements. So there was, there's a, a number of pronouncements and I'll say somewhat significant pronouncements that will be coming up. We have spent some time with the finance department discussing these upcoming changes and how they will address it. But it'll also give you some information as far as the background on, on what the impact might look like as far as how that's going to be reported within your annual financial report. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. If there's any questions that you have for Joe, Joe or myself, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Halasek. What we'll do now is I'll ask the council for a motion and if there are any questions for you or your colleague, Mr. Kowalski or for our team, we'll be sure to ask them. So at this point, council, there is a suggested action to receive the annual financial report, so we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Mayor Taylor, Bard Zarco, support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I would just like to thank Plant Moran for the good news we're getting tonight and thanks to Mr. Mackey and Mrs. Varney and their whole department for the hard work that they put in day in and day out to make sure that we are on top of everything. So I appreciate everything everyone has done and that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Counsel, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I will just wrap it up by thanking all of our, all of our team at the city. Nick Mackey got special recognition. He does a phenomenal job. Ms. Varney does a phenomenal job as well. Bear with me one moment. We lost, we lost somebody. Our esteemed, our esteemed colleague from the Planning Commission is not joining us tonight, but Ms. Sarowski is. Okay. Back on track. Nick Mackey, Jennifer Varney, Mark Vanderpool, Janice, the entire team does a phenomenal job of making sure that our books are audited properly and that everything is, lines up and, and we are 32 years in a row. What that says to me is that we're very transparent, we're very open. We have a great city government here and I'm proud to be a part of this team. So thank you too, to the auditors at Plant Moran for your presentation tonight. Very helpful and it can, you know, all 130,000-plus residents of our city can rest assured that our money, that their tax dollars are well-spent and accounted for here in the city of Sterling Heights. So with that, Ms. Riska, could we please have a roll call vote?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Seven zero. Thank you very much to the representatives from Plant Moran. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next, next item on our agenda is an ordinance introduction. And this is to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. We have a presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney. Ms. Varney? Ms. Varney, I am not able to hear you. You don't appear to be on mute, though. Why don't you try one more time? Is anyone else able to hear Ms. Varney? Okay, it looks like there's a connection problem. Ms. Varney, can you try to mute and then unmute yourself? Okay, try now. Yeah, unfortunately, Ms. Varney, we are just not able to hear you. Mr. Vanderpool, do you have the ability to hop in here for Ms. Varney?
Mayor, if you don't mind, if you'll give us just 30 seconds, I can have Jennifer come to my computer and present under my name, if that's okay.
That would be fine. We can take a, we won't recess. We'll stay here.
I don't have any video.
Hi, how about now?
Okay, we got you.
Yay!
All right.
All right, let's try again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Koshubsky and Mr. Vanderpool. Just gonna share my screen here. Here we go. Okay. So I'm here tonight to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance. The budget is normally amended twice each year, once in December and again toward the end of the fiscal year. The amendment carries forward unspent funding for projects approved in the prior year that will not be fully completed until this year. It also recognizes new grants and items that have come before council since the budget was adopted. This year, we also have updated revenue and expenditure estimates due to changes and expectations from budget adoption and this is primarily related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The adopted budget included a use of fund balance of 2.6 million that was based on conservative estimates of expected revenue impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Sorry, my screen, I'm having, my screen is not moving.
That's okay. Take your time.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Sorry, Mark.
Do we have the presentation on Mark's computer?
I'm sorry. It was working. It worked before. I tested it. Here we go. All right. All right, I apologize for the tough technical difficulties. I think we're on track. Since adoption, the revenue estimates have been increased 5.3 million to include anticipated CARES Act grant revenue to be received from the state of Michigan and Macomb County as well as estimates of state revenue sharing that have been provided by the state that are higher than what we originally thought at the end of last year. However, offsetting these increases is a further reduction in anticipated court revenue of about $1 million. The 41A District Court continues to be closed to the walk-in general public and cases are being handled remotely when possible. However, case volume is still significantly lower than normal. Court fine revenue is anticipated to be down in a total of about 1.5 million from pre-COVID levels. And lastly, a reserve has been created for a potential reduction in property taxes to account for potential tax tribunal adjustments. The budget amendment also includes a 3% increase to health insurance costs based on an increased real illustrated rates received from Blue Cross, a part-time position dedicated to boards and commissions along with related software to manage the program, funding for a diversity and inclusion consultant, increased labor costs for the November 2020 election and many of these were offset by a grant received from the state, hazard pay for police and fire personnel funded through the CARES Act, additional COVID expenditures primarily related to building reopenings and funding for the hiring of six additional firefighters to staff an additional ambulance and this is funded through another safer grant and ongoing expenditures for the facility's renovation project. The net result of these changes is a use of fund balance reserves of just over 750,000. This is significantly less than the planned use of fund balance in the original budget that was 2.6 million. And as you just heard in the audit presentation, for the year ended June 2020, the city was able to add 3 million to fund balance, which was about 1.8 million more than expected. This brought year-end fund balance to just under $30 million and this projected use of fund balance for the current year will reduce fund balance to about 29.2 million or 26% of budgeted expenditures and this is still a very healthy level and well within accepted best practices. The budget for other cities' funds is being adjusted by $32 million. Of this amount, 5.6 million is to carry over unspent road project funds, 8.3 million in approved and carry-forward expenditures for the facility's renovations, 1.4 million in approved and carry-forward expenditures for the local development finance authority and the carryover of unspent capital project funds totals 15.9 million and includes the carryforward of funds for the construction of the new DPW facility as well as other projects and equipment approved in the prior fiscal year. Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which is scheduled for adoption at the January 5th meeting.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Varney. As I noted at the beginning of the meeting tonight, we are receiving comments on agenda items via teleconference and video conferencing tonight. Members of the public will be continued, will continue to be muted until called upon. Is there anyone in the audience? I don't see any callers, so I don't need to ask for them. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand using that function on Zoom and I will see that you'd like to speak. Okay, seeing that nobody wishes to speak on this item, council, we need a motion. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Radke?
Resolve to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Henry had a second.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually, I just want to commend the city administration, including Mrs. Varney. This report is a lot better than we expected it was going to be when we started cutting things at the beginning of the pandemic. Partly that's offsetting money from Lansing, but I also think it's smart decisions we made right here in Sterling Heights. So I want to thank you for that. But then I just have a couple of questions. The first one I had was we originally set aside $20,000 for mainly return envelopes for absentee ballots and I was wondering how much we were supposed to spend and if that was offset by money from the state. So through the chair to Mrs. Varney, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ms. Varney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I checked with the city clerk, Mr. Rizgov, before this meeting and we spent about $5,000 on return postage, 100% of which will be reimbursed by the state. However, due to a glitch at the post office, we are estimating that's only about a one, about one-third of the cost of what absentee ballots were returned. So the post office made an error and I guess they didn't record all of the absentee ballots and so they didn't charge us. And so Ms. Riska believes that the true cost should have been around $15,000 for the returned absentee ballots, again, all of which would have been reimbursed by the state. And so going forward, I think, you know, 15 to 20,000 and, you know, per election is probably, you know, what we should expect in return postage based on the 35,000-plus absentee ballots that go out each election.
Wonderful. I, I think that the program showed its worth then if $15,000 worth were returned, even though the post office only charged us 5,000. I'm hopeful that we don't remind them of their error. We get to keep the proceeds. Other than that, I just want to say that I am fully in favor of these budget amendments. I am very excited for the diverse I am very excited for the diversity coordinator. It's something that we've needed for a while now. I'm excited to put that to work. I think this is a very smart budget and I'm happy to, to make these changes and just barely dip into fund balance. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mr. Yanis, anything?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Ms. Barney, you had mentioned that some of our expenses were offset by a state grant. Can you tell me what the value of that state grant was? And if it was just more than one grant, where that grant, what department that grant came through?
Yeah, we actually have quite a few grants, so.
You don't have to name them all, then.
I won't. The primary funding source is the CARES Act this year. So we received about a million and a half CARES Act funding from, through the county. And that, if you recall, you, you, the city council approved many items for that spending, laptop computers, automatic doors and plumbing fixtures and so on. So again, CARES Act funding comes with a lot of rules. And so we had, so that, that one and a half million was offset by specific expenditures. Another grant I mentioned was the SAFER Grant. We received another SAFER Grant to hire six more firefighters, a total of about 1.7 million over the three-year period. So, so I've only, in, in this particular amendment, only about 300,000 of that is reflected based on, you know, six months of the cost. And then the other major grant is, again, more CARES Act funding. We received about a quarter million dollars to, for hazard pay for police and fire personnel and about another three and a half million dollars from the CARES Act as reimbursement for public safety personnel. So the, the CARES Act money from the state allowed a presumption that police and fire personnel were diverted to COVID-19 activities and therefore their payroll was reimbursed. So those are three of the, the big grants that are included in this amendment.
So it's fair to say that federal grant money really bailed us out this year?
It definitely helped. I would say that, you know, so the three and a half million for public safety definitely offset our loss. The other grants mostly came with additional expenditures. Like I said, we, we received a grant for hazard pay of a quarter million, but we paid out a quarter million of hazard pay. And the million and a half from the county and CARES Act, we spent on computers and automatic doors. And so, so, you know, a lot of grants, there's more revenue, more expenses. The, the one that definitely helped us and was a big factor in turning our use of fund balance around was the CARES Act funding that was allowed for the reimbursement of public safety payroll. Because that was public safety payroll that was already in our budget, but through the rules of the CARES Act that allowed you to presume that public safety was diverted to COVID work, which they were. You were allowed to get reimbursement for their wages. So that was a big, that particular grant was a big factor in going from a $2.6 million use to a $750,000 use.
Very good. And Mr. Mayor, I just want to say too that I, I really appreciate, appreciate the hard work of Ms. Barney, the administration, all the department heads that had to come together and, and get us through this difficult time, this difficult economic time as well. And I think they did great work and I just want to say, good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Counsel, anyone else on this item? One's going twice. Ms. Barney, can I ask a couple of questions? So in the, in the agenda statement, it indicates right now that our fund balance, so the fund balance is about 750,000 that we're using, projected was 2.6 million. So that's a considerable amount less, which is great. That puts our total fund balance at 29.2 million, is that correct?
Yes.
And what is generally considered the best practice in terms of percentage of operating expenses for fund balance?
I mean, a good, a good goal is 20 to 30%, so, you know, we're right in the middle. Personally, I'd, you know, my goal is third, you know, 25 to 30%. So we, you know, at year end, we were at about 28. With this use will be about 26, you know, and, and the percent goes up and down basis on your total expenditures also. But, you know, I think we're, you know, we're right at a very good amount as, you know, a, you know, recommended by the GFOA and best practices.
Okay, and just a couple of questions about increases that was on one of the slides you showed. Was it 75,000 for a diversity and inclusion coordinator?
Yeah, 75,000 for a diversity and inclusion consultant. Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's a new, so that's going to be a contract position, right? Not a new employee per se, or, or can you explain that?
Yeah, correct. There is a, Mr. Vanderpoel may be able to give more information, but they're currently in the middle of an RFP process for, I believe, a contract position.
Okay, so it would be, it'd be a new position. And then I think it was 55,000 in election expenses. Can you explain what those expenses were, if you know?
Yeah, it's primarily labor-related. We had, you know, just with the monumental task of this election and the all hands on deck, we had overtime was more than we had budgeted, part-time wages was more than we had budgeted, and election inspector, if you remember, city council had improved a wage increase for election inspectors, so that also factored in. However, we did receive a $60,000 grant from the state to help offset some of those additional expenditures. But it was, it was just labor, the, the labor required to, to handle this, you know, historic election.
Right, okay. That's all I have. I, I agree with the comments of Mr. Radke, Mr. Yanis, that it was a tremendous job done by our entire team here. We gave them kudos during the last agenda item. This, if you recall, was an item that really sort of went down to the wire. We kept, normally we have a couple of budget hearings in April and we have a pretty good sense of where the budget's going to be coming in. And as difficult as it is every year, there's, there is sort of a game plan that we, we've been following year after year. And this year, that game plan was thrown completely out the window. And I, I think just an incredible testament to the work done by our administration, our finance and budget team, and really to every department head and every department for figuring out ways to continue providing the highest level services possible to all of our residents. In each and every department, we expected there to be no interruption to services. And by and large, I think we can say that we accomplished that goal and did it. And we will continue to do it. Now, of course, some things had to be shut down. But in terms of getting value for their money, I think the residents certainly got that out of this budget. And I'm proud to be voting yes on this amendment. So without any further discussion, Ms. Ryska, could we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarasky?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? If so, please virtually raise your hand by hitting that button. If not, let me check. I don't believe that there's anyone participating over the phone. No, there's not. So seeing nobody with their hand raised, I will ask council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kaski?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarko?
Um, support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. Can we please have a roll call vote, Ms. Ryska?
Mrs. Yarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarasky?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven zero. Next item on our agenda is a consideration item, and this is to consider an employment agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and city manager Mark Vanderpoel. We'll have a short presentation tonight from our city attorney, Mark Kachubski. Mr. Kachubski.
Thank you, Mayor. Before council tonight is proposed amendment to the city manager's employment agreement for your consideration. As noted in the agenda statement, this year, Mr. Vanderpoel recently completed his 16th year as the city manager. Over the years, council from time to time revisited the city manager's contract and provided base salary increases based in part on comparable council manager-run cities, with the last such increase occurring just over three and a half years ago. The city manager's base compensation appears to now have fallen below that of the market as pertains to other similarly situated city managers. In March of 2020, the city manager began discussions with the mayor relating, related to obtaining a pay adjustment to bring his base salary in line with the five largest comparable Michigan council manager running his files. Those discussions were obviously put on hold at that time due to the onset of the COVID crisis. Now, months later, as noted in your packet, we have brought forward a contract for your consideration. The last reported base salary comparable for Michigan cities were Grand Rapids, 257,500, Ann Arbor, 223,600, Troy, at 167,500, and Farmington Hills, at 163,200. Therefore, the average city manager base salary for these municipalities is now 202,950. This amount is just below, but in line with the median base salary of 208,575 for city managers in cities across the country with a population of 100,000 to 250,000, according to a recent International City County Management Association, ICMA survey. Sterling Heights city manager's current base salary is 165,000 and well below both averages. The terms of the proposed contract before you tonight have largely stayed the same, with exception to the following proposed changes. Section four of the contract is proposed to be amended to increase the city manager's base salary to the 202,950, which represents the average of the base salary of the four largest council manager cities and the state determined by population, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, Troy, Farmington Hills. Section four is also proposed to be amended to include an annual cost of living increase going forward based upon the local CPI index. Section 15 is proposed to be amended to include a more formal process for evaluation of the city manager on an annual basis. This, the process for this year will include a scoring format that is based off of the IMCA's Model City Manager Evaluation Format. If approved, the adjustment to the base salary amount would be effective on January 1st, 2021. Again, I note that all other terms of the city manager's contract remain the same as his current contract has no additional changes. With that, Mayor, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kachubski. Being that this is Mr. Vanderpoel's proposed contract, I think it would only be appropriate to offer Mr. Vanderpoel the opportunity to comment to the council before we take public comment and deliberations. Mr. Vanderpoel, would you like an opportunity to speak before council deliberates? You'll have to unmute yourself, Mr. Vanderpoel. Although it appears you've unmuted yourself, we are not able to hear you. Now, whatever Ms. Barney did the last time seemed to have worked. I think she, she left and came back in. Do you want to wait about 30 seconds or a minute or so, so you can try to get back online? Okay. So take a minute and see if we can't get you back. Okay. In the meantime, if there is anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item, you may virtually raise your hand now if you're on the phone by pressing star nine or if you are in the meeting on Zoom, you may raise your hand by hitting the appropriate button. And I will call on you after Mr. Vanderpoel has the opportunity to speak. Okay, looks like Mr. Vanderpoel is back in the meeting. You can try to unmute yourself now.
Okay, Mayor, is that working?
You're back up and running.
I apologize. But thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. Let me begin by expressing my appreciation for having the privilege of serving as city manager 16 and a half years now. This tenure is an exception to the average five-year tenure for most city managers in any one city. Being able to serve in one community for over 16 years now is directly attributable to having a mayor and city council that shared a commitment to making Sterling Heights an exceptional community for business and residents. Importantly, you've supported me in the critical and oftentimes difficult decisions that enabled city administration to lead the city in a new direction in many cases. Together, we have transformed Sterling Heights. I've also benefited from a staff that believed in a new vision for Sterling Heights and worked incredibly hard to make that vision a reality. Without the collective support of the mayor, the city council and city employees, Sterling Heights would not be an award-winning, dynamic and thriving city. When I started 16 years ago, the city was emerging from a contentious period highlighted by long-term litigation. The city was able to minimize the financial impact of this highly disruptive litigation and move forward on a stabilized financial footing. This proved to be important when the Great Recession hit in late 2008 and the city faced its greatest financial challenge in its history. Through a very proactive financial plan, the city was able to survive. In the midst of this dark period, the city achieved one of its greatest economic development accomplishments with the rebirth of the Chrysler Sterling Heights Assembly Plant through a joint federal, state, county and city initiative to save this critical industrial facility from the clutches of bankruptcy. Today, after billions of dollars in new retooling and buildings, the Shap facility is flourishing as home to the award-winning Ram 1500 pickup. Emerging from the Great Recession, the city embarked on it, on its 2030 visioning plan, the catalyst for the incredible transformation of the city since 2015. Recreating recreation, reactivating the Clinton River, the Van Dyke and upcoming Mound Road reconstruction projects, Safe Streets 1 and 2, investing millions of dollars in neighborhoods through the Sterling Heights Initiative for Neighborhood Excellence are all products of this strategic plan that is charting the course for a vibrant, distinctive, inclusive and innovative Sterling Heights. Along the way, the city, city has garnered multiple awards for being one of the safest big cities in the nation and for its incredible placemaking efforts. As evidenced tonight, the city continues to be recognized for its financial stability through strong financial planning. And in these truly unprecedented times, Sterling Heights' approach to sustaining operations and delivering critical public services despite incredible risks has been recognized as being innovative and a best practice for municipalities. Although there are challenges to overcome, I'm excited for the future of Sterling Heights. The potential for a complete redevelopment of Lakeside Mall embodies the ideals of visioning 2030. It'll be the culmination of five years of diligent effort that we started back in 2015. The city is nearing completion of renovations that are positioning city facilities, including DPW, City Hall, the Police Department, the Library, the Court, for the next phase of a proud DPW, City Hall, the Police Department, the Library, the Court, for the next phase of a proud history. These accomplishments illustrate what is possible when local government is effective, efficient, and makes its residents and businesses the priority. For a city manager, these are the victories that help define one's professional career. Without a successful team approach, these victories would have been nothing more than aspirations. Together, we've accomplished so much, but there is so much more to do. I look forward to working with each of you and our entire team, continuing this momentum, continuing to shape a prosperous future, continuing to make Sterling Heights a destination place for residents and businesses, and most importantly, continuing the city's tradition of excellence. I'm proud to be part of this championship team and blessed to be working with a strong, dedicated mayor and city council, along with the most innovative, passionate, and skilled employees in the business. Like thousands of residents, my family and I could not be more proud to call Sterling Heights home. In conclusion, I want to thank you for considering my employment agreement this evening. I hope that my passion, abilities, and work ethic over the course of the past 16 and a half years and genuine excitement for the future of this great city merit its approval. And Mayor, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. With that, I'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, council will need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolved to approve the employment agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and Mark D. Vanderpoel and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. I do have some notes. I'm going to open up my, my remarks tonight with two apologies. And one is to the residents of Sterling Heights because, sitting on this council, it was our responsibility to ensure that the raises for our city manager were handled incrementally over the last three and a half years, and we shouldn't have to be at a point where we are back paying our day-to-day operations city manager. So that's my first apology. My second is to the city manager himself for not looking into this so that we didn't have to come to this larger increase that should have happened, like I said, incrementally. I will say that I have received several comments, and only three negative is from the residents of the community regarding this, this raise. So I think that's a good sign in itself. But as I was pulling my thoughts together as to what I would, you know, to support this raise, I took into many different aspects of rewarding an employee for a job well done. First, he meets or exceeds expectations, is innovative, is a mentor. I know that without thinking, I knew that there were two city employees that, under the mentorship of Mr. Vanderpoel, became city managers in other cities. We also had a community relations director that now is the head of the Communications Department of the largest hospital system in the state of Illinois. So he certainly knows how to mentor the people that he brings into the organizations. He works well with other community leaders. Has established a revenue base to ensure our financial stability, has provided growth and development for his staff. And certainly, we can see that because even though individuals receive their own acknowledgements from the organizations that they, they belong to, and most recently, we can say Mrs. Riska received the award. Mr. Weissankel, we just talked about this evening. We can talk about Mrs. Turgeon received another award through the Library Association. So this still reflects the team that Mr. Vanderpoel has put together. It isn't all that long ago that Mr. Vanderpoel received the Little Adam Service Award from the Chamber of Commerce. And we can easily see what Mr. Vanderpoel has been able to accomplish in the city. And as we look further and we go into the county, on the county level, we know that, in my opinion, Innovate Mount would not have been a reality if it hadn't been for Mr. Vanderpoel. He certainly was the engine that got the comments started and certainly helped us at every level to get the money that we needed to fix that roadway that goes through the city. My next thought was, is I sit on the Board of Trustees for the Michigan Municipal League, and I wanted to make sure that I had as much background as I could and as many reasons for making sure that this happened tonight. So I contacted their executive director, Daniel Martin, and I said to him, is there a chance that you can provide me with information on what Mr. Vanderpoel has contributed to decisions that are made on the state level? Because certainly that affects us. So the first of one was, Mr. Vanderpoel was a participant in the Policy Forum Series. He always comes ready for discussion and thinking about things in new ways that have often, he's often a good leader for conversation, and he's given examples. He asks probing questions. He encourages others to engage, and he speaks highly of the opportunities that he has to grow and help others in this policy forum. The communications director, he says, my input is Mark is one of the best city managers in the state, and he's always willing to step up when asked. Just this past Wednesday, for example, with less than a day's notice, Mark agreed to join the MML for a broadcast conversation with retired Utica Mayor Jackie Noonan. The podcast was about Mrs. Noonan being named the League's 2020 Honorary Life Member. But Mark didn't just show up on the call. He came to the call well-prepared and shared some amazing stories about Mrs. Mayor Noonan and how the two cities, Sterling Heights and Utica, worked together in various projects over the years. It was a great example of Mark tackling everything he does with extra effort. He couldn't come on the call just to chat, but he came prepared, and you could tell that he had done his research to have a meaningful conversation. In 2019, Mark received the League's Jimson's Claire Award for Exceptional Service, Exceptional Service Award. Here's a part of the press release that won out. Longtime City, Sterling Heights City Manager, Mark Vanderpoel, truly embodies the words exceptional service as defined by the Jim Sinclair Award. And at the time, it was in his nearly 15 years of service as Sterling Heights City Manager, Vanderpoel has worked timelessly to better his community, the region, the state, and cities across the nation. Vanderpoel has helped lead the city through multiple successful villages, proposals for roads and public safety. A true big-picture thinker who views leadership as a team effort, Vanderpoel continually plans by encouraging himself, city staff, and council members to focus on the city's future and ways to improve. He accomplishes this in part through participating in league, league training programs, conferences, and committees. He also recognizes the value of thinking behind, beyond the city's borders, supporting regional collaboration in Macomb County and throughout the state with his involvement with the Michigan Municipal League and the Michigan Municipal League Executives and the nation with his participation in the International City County Management Association. He's been a stark, staunch advocate of several league programs and initiatives, most notably the League's Save My City Campaign aimed at fixing Michigan's broken system for funding its communities. He attends and speaks at numerous forums, events, and trainings on the perils of funding for Michigan local governments. He's always willing to avail himself to media during articles on the broken system. Although he serves as the top staff member in Sterling Heights, he always chooses to take a backseat and allow the elected officials to shine. He deserves much credit for Sterling Heights' success, but does not crave or demand recognition. He's the epitome of exceptional service. Sterling Heights Mayor Michael C. Taylor said he and the city council were proud to learn Vanderpoel has been selected for this award. I can go on. Mark's work in support of Save My City Initiative has been invaluable. Mark was one of the first managers to understand the importance of this effort, not just for his community, but as an important reform for communities across the state. He has coordinated one of the very first public meetings in his community to raise public awareness about, about our municipal finance system shortcomings. More importantly, he has been there for us as a municipal expert by sharing his experience and lending his credibility as a manager to this important work. Mark has been very generous with his deputy executive. Mark has been very generous with his success in sharing the recreational village several years ago and creating excellent informative panels at the League Convention and the MME Conference to share these practices. The Director of State and Federal Affairs. Just from this year, Mark and his team, his financial director and I worked closely and have been directly engaged to support our efforts on additional federal stimulus support with contacts to our congressional delegation and the White House staff we work with. Mark has been a strong supporter of the League's Save My City Municipal Finance Reform Efforts, recently drafting a letter to state legislator leaders in support of our Headley Proposal A Reform Litigation, or Legislation. He and his staff were key advisors throughout the summer months as we negotiated our summer property tax deferral relief legislation, and they were directly involved in advocating to oppose legislation earlier in the, in the year that would have further reduced municipal tax revenues through an ill-conceived personal property tax cut fix for a major business located in Sterling Heights. Mark and his staff are a consistent source of advice and feedback across a broad range of issues, and our state affairs team relies on his engagement and expertise as we do our job advocating for local government. There's more. Mark spoke during the Michigan Development of Civil Rights, Michigan Department of Education Cultural Competency Pilot Program on what Sterling Heights is doing to foster diversity and inclusiveness. Under Mark's direction, we know that we did an outstanding job working on the 2020 census. We have several greater, they took several great ideas from the city to include in a census toolkit that was created for the rest of the state. So, and as our director says, I am grateful for Mark's time on the League Board of Trustees. He is an experienced and calming presence. His input was invaluable, and he's clearly has the respect of his peers and local government throughout Michigan. Mark led our initial efforts to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion into the League's overall platform. Mark is an excellent public service and a trusted voice. All right, now, today I said I received, you know, some remarks as far as people that were against us. Actually, two emails, one voicemail. But unsolicited, I received some remarks from the business community. One was from a representative of a hospital, and they said to me that Mark was one of the best leaders in the county. Another one was from a representative from the utility companies that said to me, first of all, give Mark whatever he wants because he's worth it. So as I look at this, and I think if it doesn't happen, what's the other side of this? Okay, if the other side of this is that, you know, Mr. Vanderpoel feels that we aren't appreciating the work that he's done to promote this city and make it a better place to live for all of us, could he look for another job? We know that down the road, looking for us to hire somebody else is going to cost us as much or more to bring somebody in, and certainly, we're losing the institutional knowledge that we already have. So that's the first thing. We're losing stability. It's, and not only that, is when I talked to the Director of MML, when I said to him, you know, I was asking these questions, he says, well, I'll tell you right now, if you end up looking for another city manager, the first thing they're going to do is, they want to know what the council's like. What's the council like to work with? How do they treat their, our city manager? Whether anybody realizes or not, MPAs, which is Master in Public Administration, first of all, are on a decline as far as people seeking, seeking those degrees, especially in wanting to work in municipalities. They might get the degree, but they go into the private sector in order to use those, that degree. It could be in a hospital system, and, and I think of this as even a, that's the first one that comes to my mind because I know people that have MPAs that are in the hospital system. So those are the things that you think about. But the other thing is, is sometimes the best of the best is taken for granted because they make the job look easy. And I know for a fact that if this doesn't pan out, Mr. Vanderpoel is very marketable. I'm sure that he has headhunters call and talked him all the time to try to lure him away from the city of Sterling Heights. And I'm certainly glad up until this time, he hasn't taken advantage of that. The other thing is, is that it's the trickle-down appearance that goes to the rest of the organization. Is that if we're not willing to pay the person that is the quarterback of this organization the money that he deserves, what does that mean for the directors in the future? And the other thought is, is if we don't start putting these raises in, incremental raises into effect, and we start having directors that are making more money, the city manager, we're off balance. And that's something that we really need to think about. So, I know that this seems, it could be a difficult decision tonight, but I have to use my leadership. I think that you have to be fearless with this, and when fearless comes, I believe, with experience. And that's how I feel. I have to trust the residents that they know that we're working in the best interest for them. And I just have to be doing my job, and my job right now is to make sure that we can secure a good city manager to rule this, or I shouldn't say rule, that's terrible words, to run this city, because we have the best form of government that there is. We, as a council, work for less that we can pay the other people more. We pay people more that have the experience to do what they, you know, they do, the knowledge that they have to do it. And I certainly am grateful that they are, this team that runs our city and makes us all look good is one, not just by the best city manager around, but one of the best people around. And I think that's all I have to say, Mayor Taylor. I might come back with more later on, but I certainly am in favor of this raise for Mr. Vanderpoel.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zarco, and I supported the motion. I'm in favor of it as well. And I don't just look at this as a raise. I look at this as a contract extension. I look at this as a way of ensuring that we can continue to have the services of Mark Vanderpoel here in the city of Sterling Heights. I know that whatever happens here tonight, Mark Vanderpoel will continue to be one of the finest city managers in the entire country, and I shudder to think about it happening in another city instead of here in the city of Sterling Heights. I want to start off my comments tonight by reminding the council of something that we do regularly at nearly every city council meeting, at least several times a year. And that is that we recognize one of our own employees for being named as the City Clerk of the Year, or the Building Official of the Year, or the Parks and Recreation Director of the Year. I, I can say that the city council went through pretty rigorous interview process with new fire chiefs, which is an opening that is in the city right now. And there was presentations and interviews, and Saturday, almost the entire day, I was unfortunately unable to be there, but I did speak with three candidates that are vying for the Sterling Heights Fire Chief position, and two of them are external candidates, and something that both of them said that struck me. So, the administration at Mr. Vanderpoel's behest had placed a director or manager in with the city council, and we met in groups of two to avoid Open Meetings Act issues. And there was a director there, and there were members of city administration there, and both of these gentlemen told me how impressed they were with the other directors, how impressed they were with the professionalism, and how excited they are to join an organization where the professionalism of the entire directors can be felt just through like a PowerPoint presentation or through an interview process. And we've always said, you know, Sterling Heights is a destination community for our police officers, for our firefighters, for employees. Very rarely do we see any of our employees leave on a lateral hire. If our employees leave, it's because they're going to be directors or city managers or some, something higher than they can attain at our city somewhere else. If our employees leave, it's because they're going to be directors or city managers or some, something higher than they can attain at our city somewhere else. That tone is set from the top. It's expected by our council from the top. The seven of us hold Mark Vanderpool to the highest possible standard. He exceeds our expectations every year. And that each one of those directors and each one of the managers that works for. The directors and every city employee, in my opinion. Understands what's expected of them. Because of the example set by Mark Vanderpool at the top of the organization. So I could go down each and every one of our department heads. I don't need to because all seven of us know that we get exceptional service out of them. Because it's demanded out of them. I had Mrs. Zarco brought up. Our past community relations director who's now working as the head of, working in communications and marketing in one of the largest. Health systems in the state of Illinois. And I had a candid conversation about with her about Mark at her retirement and Mark would probably, I don't think I've ever told him this and. She said, the man demands perfection from me. Like she said, it would drive him crazy. Sometimes she'd get a memo back and there would be like a period that should be a comma or something. But it taught her that she had to perform at the highest level all the time. There was never an exception. And, and that sort of leadership is such a huge benefit to the residents and to the business community. And to all of the people who are stakeholders here in the city of Sterling Heights. Now, I too heard from just maybe a couple, one or two residents, three or four at the most. I heard from a lot of people stakeholders in the, in the city. You know, people who are either with the school district or the business community. Or charitable organizations. And they all to a person said what a value Mark Vanderpool is to our city. So we need to retain him. I want to talk about. What some people have been saying on this city council. I tell you, I've talked with all of our council members and I've told them how I feel about this personally. That, that it's very important that we retain Mark Vanderpool and do everything we can to keep him. I don't think the timing is bad and I tell you what, it sort of is an insult to me when somebody would say that the timing is bad. The timing is only bad because we should have done this years ago. We should have made sure that Mark Vanderpool was being paid. At least the average wage years ago. In Sterling Heights, we have always prided ourselves on paying all of our city employees above average wages. And expecting above average results and we get that. So while some people might say, yeah, there's a raging pandemic out there and I get that. I certainly understand it. I mean, all seven of us on this city council deal with this pandemic every single day. We fielded calls from our constituents, we fielded calls from neighbors and friends in the city. And in the surrounding area that need our assistance and need our help that are struggling and I know that. But don't fool yourself into thinking that a vote no on this contract is in any way. Going to help somebody out there who is struggling. It's not. And I would suggest that that is a false equivalency that's conjured up in your own mind. That we have a job to do as a city council, which is to lead through difficult times. Having Mark Vanderpool shored up for the next several years. Will provide a short term benefit to our residents. Far beyond having additional $40,000 in fund balance. We heard from Ms. Barney tonight, we've got $29.2 million in our bank account. And if we don't give this raise, we'll have $29.2 million in our bank account. We do have, give this raise, we'll have $29.2 million in our bank account. And I don't mean to be flippant about that, but for goodness sakes, council. We voted unanimously tonight unanimously. Spent $28,000 on fabric. To go on the mile markers on Van Dyke. Spent $38,000 on a Chevy Tahoe. Spent $2 million on a contract with Blue Cross. We spent $33,000 on upgrades to the fire department station number five. Remodeling, really. All worthy causes, all items I voted yes on. We approved a budget amendment where we heard that we spent about $55,000 giving raises to election workers. And what was the rationale that we used? We can't get the election workers because they're going to Clinton Township and they're going to Warren. And they're going to the other cities where they get paid more money. Our own residents are going to work in other cities because they're getting paid more money. What do you think is going to happen if we continue to pay 20% under market? Now, if now's not the right time, when is? Six months from now? We're not going to have any more money six months from now. 12 months from now, we're still not going to have any more money. We have the ability to pay this right now. It's long overdue. And I strongly believe that we are getting more than good value for Mark Vanderpool. So I've talked to our council colleagues. And almost to a person, I've heard Mark Vanderpool deserves the money. Mark Vanderpool is worth the money. If Mark Vanderpool were to leave, we would be paying at least this much money to his replacement. So why aren't we doing it now? We should be. It's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to make sure that we have steady leadership. As we are on the precipice of some very important decisions in the city's history. Lakeside Mall could become a $1 billion development. Or it could be what we've seen so many other shopping malls across the state and across the country turn into. We have a new fire chief coming on board. We have a police department that frankly, the number one complaint I hear is we need more traffic enforcement out there. We need more bodies. We know we're going to be discussing that. We know we have election reform issues that we need to be able to communicate to the state of Michigan. And we heard from Mrs. Zarco about Mark Vanderpool's ability to create coalitions and use his influence at the state level. We heard about what he did to help create the Innovate Mom project that brought $100 million to Macomb County. Just recently, Mark was instrumental in creating. A task force to go after the space command here in the city of Sterling Heights and at Salford Air National Guard. And what used to be something that people would laugh at and say, come on. Has become expected because of Mark's leadership. So I understand the times are tough out there. I understand that many people are struggling. I understand that this pandemic is raging on and costing people very, very dearly. But respectfully, the city of Sterling Heights continues to go on. We continue to have firefighters that need to respond to emergencies. We continue to have police patrolling our streets. We continue to have water main breaks. We continue to have infrastructure needs. We continue to have residents who want to see value for their tax dollars. So we have parks and recreation offerings. We have unique and creative solutions to the problems facing all of us. And Mark Vanderpool is at the top of the organization making it happen. I am proud to serve with Mark. I think that he's worth the money. He deserves the money. And I again shudder to think what would happen. If we were to lose him. Because one thing I think we can all agree on, looking at cities across Metro Detroit, Macomb County. The cost of bad leadership is far greater than the cost of good leadership. The cost of having a bad city manager. Or an average city manager is a lot more than $40,000. It's a lot more than some fabric for mile markers. So the reason that we are able to afford and promote those sort of things. Is because we have such a well-run organization. And so. With that, I want to say one final thing. I have never in my life had the opportunity to serve with somebody who takes so little credit, but deserves so much. For the last 11 years, every accomplishment. Of our city, Mark Vanderpool has pushed onto the city council and sat in the back. To highlight either his directors, city council, or someone else. Even small things like almost every day, I get multiple calls and emails with constituent issues. And they're almost all given to Mark Vanderpool to address with the appropriate department head. And by the end of the day, those issues are solved 99 times out of 100. And who gets the credit? I do. And I'm sure it happens to everyone on the Zoom call. Mark, that is the kind of person Mark Vanderpool is. We have 13 bargaining units in Sterling Heights. All 13 of our bargaining units have employees. Who we pay above average wages to. Because we expect above average results and we get them. And all of our bargaining units get raises every year. Not a single person has been laid off. Not a single person has seen their wages decline as a result of this pandemic. And while Mark could have come at the beginning of this latest round of bargaining, you know, because it takes a few years. It essentially takes three years to get through all of our collective bargaining agreements. We'll do three or four a year and then another one will expire and we'll go three or four through that year. So three years ago, Mark Vanderpool could have come to us and said, we're going to be negotiating some increased wages and raises for our city employees. But before any of them get anything, I gotta get mine. He could have done that and he would have been deserving that, but he didn't. We have labor peace. We have employees who are taken care of and treated well. And Mark's waited to the very end of that process to come to us. And shame on us. Shame on us. If we don't do the right thing here. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to a colleague on the city council who would like to speak. Not, I guess.
I'll go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Sarowski.
So thank you very much, Mayor Taylor. I. So I'm looking at these four. Wait, wages that we are comparing Mark Vanderpool's to. Grand Rapids at 27, 257,000. They have universities, they have hospitals. That, that city has universities, hospitals, downtown development authority. That city manager has quite a bit more departments than Mark Vanderpool in Sterling Heights does. Ann Arbor, 223,000. Major university in the entire United States, downtown development authority. Dealing with the university itself is always probably worth that and more, but. Hospitals. Transit. More departments. Troy, 167,500. Little bit more than what Mark's currently making. Probably not enough. Troy has quite a, quite a lot of. Income tax, they have a higher tax base. Farmington Hills, 163,500. Also probably a little bit low. Mark is making 165. Mark Hackel, the county executive makes 171. I don't think that we, we, I was hearing that we are, we have, we have a false equivalency going on here. That is to me a false equivalency to include Grand Rapids and Ann Arbor with the other two cities, including Sterling Heights. We are completely different. We're comparing apples and oranges. We're completely comparing different departments. We're comparing different. City needs and city services. They do not compare. I am not. Against giving Mark Vanderpool a raise. But right now, where we're still 200 employees down from our cut two in 2009. When I, when I know that there are employees that have not, positions have not been replaced in many departments. When I know for a fact that employees now have to pay an additional hundred dollars starting in 2021 to their health insurance. Every single month. I don't think that this is the time. Yes. We're replacing the torn fabric mile markers and the, the fabric that is failing. Maintenance costs do not equate a 22.4% income wage to one human being. I do really like Mark. He does deserve all the accolades that he has received. This is not the time. This is a pandemic. We still don't know where we're going to come out of it. All of the experts say it's going to get much worse. We don't have a roadmap to follow on this and this is, in my opinion, not the time. We have given Mark Vanderpool raises over the last few years. Last one then that he received was a $13,000 raise. So it hasn't been that we've completely not given him raises. He, I do think he could go up. I would be willing to do $10,000 raise now, $10,000 raise in the next year, $10,000 raise in the, maybe even. The following year, but not 40 at once. Not in these economic times. So I think it would be, I believe it would be hypocritical of myself. Sure, I think I'm worth a lot more too. I can compare myself as to a director of nursing at a different hospital in a different city that makes 30, 40, $50,000 more than me. Do I hold myself to those standards? I think that I do. But I do not believe. That it's always the prudent thing or the right thing to do just because it's, the numbers are out there. To just start jumping on those numbers. Not going to do it. I apologize to Mark. I know I talked with him at length. I told him I could not, I couldn't do, I couldn't do it. And I'm, I still can't. So that is my, that is how I feel. And. I have, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to agree with, with Councilwoman Sarowski, Mayor Pro Tem Sarowski. We talked at length, I know Liz and I talked at length about this. Mark Vanderpool is an excellent city manager. I can't say enough about him. He does so many tremendous things for Sterling Heights. But during a pandemic, when so many people are unemployment, businesses are closed. It's almost a slap in the face for us to give our highest paid employee a $38,000 raise. Which would equate to almost 23% from his prior salary. If you break it down year by year, it's six and a half percent a year. I don't know any of our other employees in our organization who get six and a half percent a year. I don't get six and a half percent where I work. You know, I talked to a lot of residents about this. Maybe I didn't talk to enough stakeholders in the business community, but I talked to people on my block. People who I saw when I went out, run my errand. And overwhelmingly, their lives are on hold because of the pandemic. They, they are not able to make big ticket purchases. They're not able to, to, to go on and do the things that they want to do. Because it's hard. I talked to one resident. He was supposed to get a 3% raise this year as part of his contract that he always gets 3% raise every year. They canceled it this year because of COVID-19. These are the people who live in our community and I can't, we have to share the pain. We have to tighten our belt. And the idea that, that I can give a tremendous amount of money to, to one employee. And then tell our residents, well, you know, I'm sorry, you're, you're not, you know, it's. I just think it's, it's tone deaf and it's hypocritical. It's hypocritical when we're asking Lansing and DC for money to help fund our budget. We're going hat in hand and then saying, look, our budget is so tight, we're dipping into fund balance. And look, everybody has their pet priorities. Everybody has, you know, I wanted my diversity consultant. I get it. You know, everybody has a thing that they care about and that's why we're a great city council, all seven of us, because we have different priorities. We have different interests. I mean, I could go down the line and Mr. Yanez is really big on recycling and I respect that. I mean. We have different interests. I mean, I could go down the line. I mean, Mr. Yanez is really big on recycling, and I respect that. I mean, there's so many things. You know, Mrs., Mrs. Kosky has talked to me about sidewalks again and again, because we both understand how important a walkable community is. So, I can understand that if you pull one budget priority for one year out and you say, "This is what, what's going on," you know, it can make it look bad, but this is a contract that, it's only the amount, thirty-eight-thousand dollars more a year. It's also that we're changing his raises so that they're automatic. You know, Mr. Vanderpool has an unlimited contract, and I never, this is my first time ever signing off on his contract. It was negotiated before I got here. I've never given him a pay increase. I've never voted on a contract for him. You know, his contract is until it ends, which is fine. I mean, that, that's respectable. You know, his raises would now come up every year. I don't know anyone else in America who has a guaranteed raise every year. And that, to me, is just, it's just, I, I can't sign off on that. You know, I think about this. As Liz said, the county executive of Macomb County, Mark Hackle, makes one-hundred-and-seventy-one-five or something like that. The county executive of Wayne County makes the exact same thing, one-hundred-and-seventy-one-five. David Coulter, the new county executive in Oakland County, makes two-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars a year. The governor of the state of Michigan makes one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars a year. Mark Vanderpool would make more than all of them. Those are elected positions, but I mean, they run big infrastructure with many employees and many department heads. Um, you know, we're doing a huge personnel study this year to really talk about top-down organization. And we talk a lot about lean management, how we do more with less in Sterling Heights, and we do. But as I've said since I was elected, we've cut to the bone. We've cut too much. We have too few employees. We run too lean. And I think that's why every single study that's going to come back is going to say, "We need to hire more people. We need more police officers. We need more firefighters. We need more clerks' employees. We need more community relations employees. We probably need more DPW employees, because we've done so much with so little." And going into that round, you know, thirty-eight-thousand dollars, I called our budget director and asked, "What's the average employee?" And essentially, thirty-eight-thousand dollars would be half, half of an employee for one year. So, right there, that's half an employee we could have to help service the residents. I would be amenable to giving Mr. Vanderpool a raise. I just don't, don't know if I can be amenable this year. And, and people say, "Oh, if it's good next year, it's good this year." But to me, at the end of the day, I have to, to be in solidarity with my residents who are hurting right now. You know, I talked to a waitress yesterday who says that she went from working every day to working three days a week right now. She's not making ends meet because of the pandemic. And I asked her what she thought about this, and she said, "I just, I wouldn't be," this is unbelievable to her. So, um, you know, let's go further with what, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sarowski was saying. Ann Arbor and, and Grand Rapids are much different cities than Sterling Heights, but we are similar in some ways. But they also have transportation systems. They have downtown development authority. And we're trying to get there. Don't get me wrong. We're working on lakes. We want a downtown. We want those large buildings like Troy has. We want that total reconstruction of sixteen mile that they have. But I don't think we're there yet. And to, to basically let other cities overpay their managers and then say, "Well, we have to overpay ours because they're overpaying theirs," is outsourcing decisions that we make here in council to, to other people. You know? Also, all of the cities that are, are considered our peers in salary do two things. They tax their residents a lot more, and they're worth a lot more than us. They have, they have higher property values, higher salaries. Now, Sterling Heights is still a working-class town. We're, we're starting to get real nice, in my opinion, but we're working class. And I just don't think this conforms with it, so I apologize to Mr. Vanderpool. Uh, I ask that this not be placed on the agenda. I do not think this is a good time. Hopefully, next year, when, when, when the, the pandemic's over, we can re-approach this issue. But for right now, I have to sadly be voting no. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else like to speak on this item? Mrs. Kosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sixteen years ago, I was not happy with the city manager's contract. To me, it is a perpetual contract. In other words, there's no ending date. And because of that, I think we failed greatly. Looking at the little, uh, printout that we received comparing the different cities, Troy, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, Farmington Hills, they review yearly the city manager's contract, except I think Farmington Hills, that's upon the discretion of the mayor and council. But normally, they review them every year. And at that time, they review their performance and give a pay adjustment. That's, excuse me, that's what we should have been doing. Because we did not do that, that's why we're in this situation that we're in today. Going back, he's had a number of raises, but one, when he had a job offer someplace else. So, we gave him a very large raise to keep him. Three years ago, three-and-a-half years ago, we gave him another raise. So, it's not like we're not giving him any raises. It's because we have not been doing our job. Mr. Vanderpool is an excellent city manager. He does a great job for Sterling Heights. I'm very proud to call him our city manager. And like I said, wonderful job. But we should have been reviewing his contract every single year. We should have been giving pay increases every single year. We didn't do it. Shame on us. So, now all of a sudden, we're going to reach in our pocket and say, "Well, we've got all this money. Let's give him a nice big raise to take him up to, uh, an average between the other four communities." Well, I did a little math based on the two, uh, two-hundred-and-three, two-hundred-and-two, nine-fifty, whatever it is. His performance pay would be three-and-a-half percent of base, which is seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars. His deferred compensation, retiree healthcare, two percent of base, four-thousand-fifty-nine dollars. His 401K, twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Add them all up, I think I came up with two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. He probably is worth every single penny of it. Look at what he's done for the county. Look at what he's done for MML. Look at what he's done for Lansing, bringing money back. I don't begrudge him the money, but now is not the time to do it because I don't like the way the contract is written. We're going to continue on with a perpetual contract. We're going to give him automatic raises. Sure, it's going to be based on the Consumer Price Index, could be one percent, could be zero. But if it goes down, he's not going to take any pay deduction. The only way he's going to take a pay deduction is if we cut the salaries of the other executives in, uh, in the city, our directors, by five percent. So, I have to vote no, because I don't like his contract. And until we change the way a review and do this annually and give him his raises as his performance indicates, you should be paid for what you accomplish. And that should be easy for us to determine and put a dollar P on it and do it that way. So, tonight, I'm sorry, but I have to vote no. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Let me, um, start by saying that I agree that this is something that we should have addressed all along. Um, but I also believe that this is long overdue. Mr. Vanderpool has the reputation not only as one of the best and most effective city managers in the state, but he has the reputation of one of the best and most effective city managers in the nation. Sterling Heights has become a benchmark on how a bit, how to run a big city with excellent services and low crime while maintaining low taxes. This just doesn't happen. It takes vision, hard work, forward-thinking, problem-solving, and not being afraid to think outside of the box. These are just some of the things that Mr. Vanderpool brings to the residents of this city. Not to mention the countless hours that Mr. Vanderpool makes himself available to any resident or business owner in this community that has an issue. Since Mr. Vanderpool has come to Sterling Heights, he's taken charge in at least two very bleak and challenging times. And as we are in the, uh, middle of a pandemic with many moving parts, he's always looking to move the, for, the city forward while respecting the taxpayers of the city. Um, we are lucky that he's been loyal to this city, because I'm sure he has had previous offers for probably more money, and he's declined those offers because he loves the city and he wants to be here. Um, I think, you know, if we go out for a professional search at this point for a city manager, it, the, the cost of just the search will out, outdo what Mr. Vanderpool's raise is in this contract. I think, um, you know, as far as bad timing, I think this is the perfect timing. It sets the, the, um, the, the message to our residents that we are willing to invest in our community and to make sure that we have stability. We have someone leading this city that has a proven record of stability and progress. I don't want to take step backward. You know, I also worry about not only Mr. Vanderpool, but future city managers that we may not be able to, um, appeal to the best of the best like we're used to because of the wage that we are offering. You know, I'm one that always shops the clearance rack, but guess what? Sometimes you get what you pay for. And if we keep this, um, wage, uh, below our comparables instead of an average of our comparables, we just might get what we pay for, and I'm not willing to settle for that. Um, I've heard, um, the open-ended contract. You know, Mr. Vanderpool is an at-will employee. That means that he's an election away, four votes from council, away from losing a job at any point. And if that were to happen, let's say four members of council don't like Mr. Vanderpool's shoes that day, and they fire him, yes, he gets a severance pa- package, which is very common with city managers because there was not cause to fire him, but you're still able to. On the other hand, if Mr. Vanderpool were to commit a crime or be, um, derelict of duty or falsify documents, he would be fired on the spot, zero severance. There's the door. That's what is, this contract states. So, to say it's open-ended, sure, it's open-ended, but he is at the will of whatever council is sitting. And it's not necessarily this council. We have our own elections. So, um, you know, I think he deserves our, um, respect for what he's done for us, for what he's done for our community. Uh, and let, let me be clear. I'm not willing to lose one of the top city managers in the nation because the timing is wrong. If anything, I think the time is right. We need to show that we are willing to have stability in this city. We're not raising taxes to give Mr. Vanderpool a raise. In fact, Mr. Vanderpool's raise costs each household about thirty cents. And that doesn't even include the business taxpayers in the city. So, let's do that math. And as far as I'm concerned, for thirty cents from my household, it's well worth it. It's well worth what Mr. Vanderpool brings to this community. I want to say that I sympathize with our residents that are struggling right now. We're in unprecedented times. But I took an oath of office to do what was in the best interest of all the taxpayers of this city. And that being said, I can honestly say that I have to vote yes on this motion. That is the best interest of the residents of this city, the stability and the moving forward that Mr. Vanderpool leads our ship. You know, I can, I can say I've sat at this table over the years, and there have been some motions that I voted yes on that weren't necessarily in the best interest of my personal household. But to put it aside and do what's in the best interest of the, of the residents as a whole, that's the oath of office I took, and that's, that is what I take seriously. So, today I will be in support of the motion on the floor. Um, let's step forward instead of backwards and adjusting a pay rate that's been duly deserved in line with the fair market value. Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Uh, Councilman Yanez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, you're supposed to go last. I, I feel like I'm in a difficult position, so thanks a lot. Um...
I'll talk after you, Henry, so we'll...
Okay. Um, you know, I'm the kind of guy, a hundred bucks is still a lot of money to me. I mean, it, it just is, and, and some of the money that we're talking about is really mind-boggling. I remember having a conversation with Candace Miller after she became DPW, uh, director, and we talked about this project that, that she needed, you know, like a couple million dollars from the state, and I said, "Did you ever believe we'd be sitting here just saying a couple million dollars is just a couple million dollars?" And of course, she laughed and said, "Well, try to talk about trillions of dollars, right?" And, and that's, that's government, you know? Projects are big and, and, uh, costs are relative. Um, I, 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 and I want to say that I appreciate every single thing that every one of my colleagues said, both for and against. Um, you know, we start, we start our meetings out with the invocation, uh, you know, uh, give this, give the city council courage and wisdom to do what's right for the people. And I think everybody at city council did that. They, they, they were very thoughtful uh, in their arguments, and I think every argument comes from the heart, uh, as well as the, as well as the head. Um, so I had a lot of issues with this, like some of my colleagues, and I thought the best way to solve the issue was to talk to Mark Vanderpool himself. So, I met with Mark, uh, for, uh, close to an hour. And we talked about a lot of things, but, and I asked him a lot of questions, but one of the questions I asked him is, "Mark, what have you done for me lately?" And I, I, I listened to everything that Councilwoman Ziarco had to say and everything that you had to say. Uh, Mark Vanderpool has done a lot of stuff in the past. He's done a lot of great stuff. I, I talked to a, uh, another city manager, uh, who told me that other city managers referred to Mark Vanderpool as the godfather. He is revered amongst other city managers. That in itself isn't, isn't value for a pay raise, but what is? And, and what is, is the city being prepared. I, I, I would always say at the fire department, the firefighter's job is not to respond to emergencies, is to be prepared to respond to emergencies. And that's one of the things that, was, this one of the values that we get out of, out of Mark Vanderpool, that, um, he has shown us that he can lead the city through difficult times, and difficult times are always coming. Tomorrow always comes. After nine-eleven, after the Great Recession, now during the, this pandemic, time doesn't stop. Tomorrow comes, and at some point, tomorrow becomes today. And the question is, are we prepared? Are we prepared? Businesses want certainty. Businesses are going to come to Sterling Heights because they know they're going to get certainty. I don't see this as much of a pay raise as I see it as an investment in our community. And I think we'll get, uh, of, an excellent return on investment by making sure that over the next number of years, and, and Councilwoman Schmidt is right, the next city council could decide to, to, to bounce the, the city manager, but for the next several years and maybe to the end of his career, uh, Mark Vanderpool has shown that he can lead the city in the past. uh, Mark Vanderpoel has shown that he can lead the city in the past, will lead it in the future. We need not only that certainty, but Marcus focuses on vision. We need to have that vision, whether it's Lakeside Mall or North Van Dyke or what Councilman Radke and I beat him on the head all the time about taking care of the southern part of the city. All these things, and we don't know what next year holds. I I'm I'm very concerned that next year financially is going to be worse than this year. I don't think we're going to have care of money and the revenues may may be down. We need strong, steady and respected leadership and we need it down the road. We don't just need it next year. We we need, you know, four, five, six, seven years from now that we have that leadership. You know, it said that past is prologue. We know Mark Vanderpoel's past. We know what he's going to do in the future. We know that we're going to have visioning twenty forty or twenty forty-five or twenty fifty and Mark's going to lead that. You know, I I I've had my moments with Mark, as we all have, right? And and that's just part of being a a a group and we exchange ideas and viewpoints and sometimes we rub each other the wrong way. But in the end, this is about leading the city into the future in a way that is going to progress us. More businesses coming here. Uh, making sure that our neighborhoods are one of the safest and 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 best places to live. You know, when I walk through the city and when I, when I, you know, had the opportunity to do that before COVID, I would ask people, how are we doing? What what do you think? And then they would always say, we live in a great city. Parks are great, neighborhoods are nice. Yeah, there'd be a complaint about speeding through the neighborhood, you know, whatever. But everybody would say, we live in a great city. That didn't accent happen by accident. That's because we had leadership at the top, all the way down, our directors, our employees, city councils, everybody made sure that we were focusing on the future and the betterment of the city. Again, this is an investment. This is not just a salary. And I am sure whether whether it's through economic expansion or or a way to cost save or whatever, that money that we're the extra money that we're paying now is going to be realized. I think it's going to be realized in multiple folds, not just one dollar for dollar. I appreciate the fact that we're in a pandemic, that people are having very difficult times. That does not go by me. Uh, I I used to say, I used to tell my 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 colleagues in Lansing that I come from a city where the people that live there are the first to feel a bad economy and the last to recover from it. These are working-class people, just like my my mom and dad. My dad, forty-eight years at Ford Motor Company is a welder. So, you know, having said that, I just think that we cannot opportunity is knocking, we have to answer. And now is the time to do that. Let's let's go ahead. Let's 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 make sure that Mark Vanderpoel is going to lead the city uh into the future and let's focus on the future and not maybe what's going to happen next year or a year and a half or two years down the road. We need some certainty. We need it now and I'm going to vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Yanis. Uh, everyone's had an opportunity to speak, so at this point, Mrs. Risk, can we please have a roll call vote?
Certainly. Mrs. Koski?
No.
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Saroski?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarko?
Yes.
Motion carries four, three. The contract is approved. Congratulations, Mark. Well deserved. Next item on our agenda. Find the agenda. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and May Supervisory Employees Union. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel and Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. A city council approved a memorandum of understanding that facilitated the separation of the purchasing manager job duties from the newly created facility maintenance director position. This action was necessary to ensure that both job classifications were capable of being performed at a high level based on current workloads. Moving forward, Mark Carufell assume assumed and has been discharging the duties of purchasing manager on a contractual basis. Mr. Carufell had a long and distinguished career with the city as a as an employee, including serving as risk manager, city clerk and purchasing manager. The human resources did undertake a recruitment for a new purchasing manager uh this past year. Unfortunately, the applicant pool proved to be underwhelming and the decision was made to await an improved job market for this critical position. Human resources deemed the best course of action was to facilitate uh Mr. Carufell continuing in the position as a retiree hired by the city as a purchasing manager from January second, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This extended period provides a number of advantages, including it allows human resources to conduct a thorough external recruitment with the potential of an improved applicant pool. It allows human resources to consider internal candidates due to the availability of Mr. Carufell to train and supervise the development of a current city employee who may have limited purchasing experience affords the city cost savings over the one and a half-year reemployment period versus continuing to pay the contractual terms. Human resources approached the Supervisory Employees Union and secured its approval of the MOU that's before you this evening to facilitate rehiring Mr. Carufell in this very limited duration, as I just mentioned. Other than salary and some reasonable paid time off, Mr. Carufell shall not receive any other wages or benefits provided to current members pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. The pension and retirement benefits of the retiree reemployed pursuant to this section shall not be suspended during the term of the reemployment. Based on the present need for an exceptional, exceptional, experienced and highly ethical person to fill the current vacancy in the purchasing manager a position and the availability of Mr. Carufell to fill that need, I respectfully request the mayor and city council approval this evening of the memorandum that is before you and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. If anyone in the public wishes to speak on this item, please press star nine if you're on the phone or raise your hand virtually. Check to see one more time. Doesn't look like we have anybody interested in participating in this item, so I will call for a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the May Supervisory Employees Union to facilitate the rehiring, rehiring of retiree Mark Carufell as purchasing manager and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the memorandum on behalf of the city.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Um, I think it's been explained. I think that I like that there's a beginning and an end um as far as this agreement. So I I'm comfortable. Um, we certainly know Mr. Carufell's reputation and as long as we continue to lurk, you know, to um work to fill this position by uh someone else, I have no problem with it, but right now it's it's what we need and I think we need to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Carufell will be making seventy-five percent of the wage, but will receive no benefits as a rehire since he's already retired from the city of Sterling Heights, correct?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, that is correct. Uh, what he will make is thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. Um, and and that's for a two thousand eighty-hour um a year uh schedule. Uh, currently under the contractual services, uh, we were paying over eighty dollars. So this is a significant cost savings to the city, but you're correct, no other benefits.
Mr. Carrywell, Carufell, in my experience, has been an excellent employee. He has really improved the purchasing department since he's come on on the part-time basis. I see no reason why not to keep him for as long as he wants to stay at this point because he's doing an excellent job. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else on this item? If not, uh, I'll just say that I've been uh lucky enough to work with Mr. Carufell uh for off and on really for the last eleven years since I've been here and uh find him to be a tremendous asset to the city of Sterling Heights and glad to have him, uh, you know, continuing to work and and and, uh, you know, he's kind of like one of those utility players on a baseball team. He can do pretty much anything and everything. And, um, you know, this is quite a bargain to have him. So I'll be uh voting yes. So without any further discussion, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Yarko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koski?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is communications from citizens. Uh, looking at our roster here, it looks like we've got WWJ. Would you like to speak, WWJ? Don't think so. Uh, one other, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually. Going once, going twice. Okay, so I will close that portion and we'll move on to reports from city administration. Uh, Mr. Vanderpoel, any reports for tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kusubski?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we got one matter for closed session tonight.
Okay. Counsel, I'll open it up to you for reports or any new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish the people at home a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year and happy holidays, however you celebrate. This has been a very dark year for us, but I think we see some light at the end of the tunnel. I was personally excited to watch the the first vaccines roll out of Portage, Michigan, where Pfizer has a plant to develop vaccines. And I actually commented to Mr. Vanderpoel, hopefully we could try to flag some of that business here at Sterling Heights since we have such wonderful facilities because I'm so proud of the American ingenuity mixed with German biotech. So just please, uh, bear with us for a little bit longer, wear your mask, socially distance, stay safe, hug your family tight this year and hopefully we'll get back to normal next year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yanis?
Um, I too want to make sure that I um say thank you and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all the citizens, everybody who who's out there, you know, they pay the taxes. We do what we we do because of the taxpayers. Pick up the tab on that and Sterling Heights. Sterling Heights is a great city because of the taxpayers. Um, so I just want to make sure I say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone. But I I would also be remiss uh if I didn't say thank you, a special thank you to the employees of the city of Sterling Heights this year. You know, we 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 thank Mr. Vanderpoel and we thank the directors and uh we thank a lot of people, but you know, in this very difficult year with with infectious disease floating around, uh, people showed up to work. Firefighters, police officers, uh, DPW workers, uh, staff worked at home. Staff came back to the city hall. Um, Ms. Riska and her team during a tumultuous election did outstanding work. Uh, our our staff in this city is just outstanding and I can't thank them enough for the work that they do. And I just wanted to make sure that I said that as we go off into the holidays and I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a very, very happy and uh a much better new year uh in twenty twenty-one. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Saroski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I also want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, however you support or you 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 celebrate your religion and your holiday at any time. I do want to thank not only the city and all the employees, but especially DPW and the company that we hired to do the lights for our city. I have the beauty and privilege of driving through those every night on my way home. And it's gorgeous to drive down Utica Road right by Dodge Park. So that is really something that is I love Christmas lights. I've driven around watching Christmas lights my whole life and it's it's really nice to know that our city has such a beautiful display. With that, to my colleagues, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And please let's, as as Councilman Radke said, wear your masks, socially distance. And we'll get through this together. So thank you, guys. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very happy and healthy new year holiday season as well. Um, we all have really been through a lot in twenty twenty and we're all ready to get on to twenty twenty-one. We do have to remember to be patient. Um, you know, uh, the vaccine is here, but it's going to take time uh for us to have uh safety in numbers. So, um, whatever you do, just remember that we're all in this together and uh just enjoy your families over the holiday season as much you can and let's hope for a much better, much more um normal, whatever that will be, uh, new year. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schmidt. Mrs. Koski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a happy, healthy, prosperous new year. Please wear your masks, be safe, stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koski and Mrs. Zarco.
Hi, um, you know, this is certainly unprecedented. We keep saying that should be the uh the word of the year. Um, and we're, it's different. This holiday is going to be different for all of us. And I hope that we consider our health first. I know this is going to be the first time in my life that I'm not going to be spending Christmas with my mom. And I do it for her, not just for myself because I certainly know that I want to spend next Christmas with her. So, um, I want to wish everybody on there a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Please, please think of yourself and and your family and make sure that you do everything you can to be healthy during this holiday because we all want certainly a healthy and prosperous New Years next year. So, um, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco, and thank you, Counsel. Merry Christmas to everyone in the city of Sterling Heights and beyond. Many great points brought up by my colleagues tonight. Uh, I just want to echo what Henry Yanis said, uh, which is that I've I mentioned it a couple of times today. We we had really tremendous service from our our employees putting our residents and putting our businesses first and doing everything that they could to make this as close to a normal year as possible. It it really, it really sucked, right? I mean, this has just been terrible. You know, sometimes I just can't believe what we're living through. It's surreal. It's just so surreal. But what we have going for us is that a lot of times, like a lot of times I get to talk with mayors in other cities and I know we all do. We talk, you know, with with our counterparts in other cities in Michigan or across the country and like we might have a, you know, we might have a a natural disaster, a flood or a hurricane and we'll send our firefighters down to the south to take care of it. And it, and this is happening in every city, in every household across the entire world. And in a time when we almost have never been this polarized as a nation, I mean, I hope we take this opportunity to to think of what we've done, what we have accomplished as a country that we are going to come out of this and twenty twenty-one is going to be a better year. And when we look back at the last council meeting in twenty twenty-one, I guarantee we're going to have a lot more normalcy. We're going to be back to I hope, close to the way it was before and it's it's because of all of us pulling together. So here's to twenty twenty-one and um I look forward to seeing all of you then. I can't wait to get back into our city hall. I hope we're there sometime soon. It's been nine months and um just couldn't believe what we've been through together. Uh, I want to thank my colleagues on the city council, uh, going from seven emergency meetings a week to six emergency meetings a week to five emergency meetings a week to six emergency meetings a week. Our directors, emergency meetings every day. Our directors, emergency meetings every day. Uh, I mean, we, we, I think have done everything we can to answer the call this year. Uh, I'm proud to be part of this team. I wish all of you a Merry Christmas. Wish everyone at home a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and uh, let's come back stronger, twenty twenty-one. Okay. We have a closed session tonight, which um, I'm not entirely sure how that's going to happen. But we're going to find out very quickly here. So um, we're going to need to entertain, we're going to need, so before I get there, can I ask Mr. Dion or whoever wants to take? So are we just going to uh, adjourn, and then um, once we adjourn, are we going to continue on in the motion or continue on in the meeting, I should say, or do we leave and come back to a new meeting? Mr. Kachubsky?
The easiest thing to do at this point, Mayor, as you as the host, there's, there's, Mr. Dion could transfer the host to you, would be to drop everybody out except for city manager, counsel, you, and Melanie Riska and myself, and everybody else.
So.
And includes Sterling Heights TV as well would be out of the uh, meeting as well.
Okay. WWJ, you're going too. We love you, but you got to go. Sorry. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarko?
So moved.
Or, it's been moved and supported. Mrs. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries seven, zero. We will adjourn into closed session. We will not be returning. And uh, thank you to everyone at home who participated or watched, and thank you to those who are in the meeting. You uh, can leave now. Thank you.